I call to order the Rosemont Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, July, or Tuesday, August 27th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
There are no additions, Madam Chair.
Is there any input from the audience on items that are not on tonight's agenda? Seeing then, we'll move forward to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda this evening consists of our minutes from the July 23, 2024 regular meeting. Are there any comments or questions from the commissioners on the consent agenda? Seeing now, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Kenninger, seconded by Commissioner Ellis. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. We have one item on old business this evening. It is a request by KJ Walk for approval of a PUD final site and building plan and major amendment. This was continued from our previous meeting, and we are being asked to continue it to the next meeting. So with that, we will, I will make a motion to continue this item to the September 24, 2024 Regular Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Kenninger, seconded by Commissioner Whitman. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. This item will move forward to the September 24, 2024 meeting. As we had public notices out for it in July, there will be no new public notices for that. And then we will move forward with our public hearing section this evening. We have a number of items in our public hearing section. We are going to start with the request by Today's Life Childcare for a site plan review, and I will turn it over to Anthony.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you said, this is a request for a site plan review by Today's Life Childcare. They are proposing to construct a childcare facility on 149th Street West. This is immediately east of the Anytime Fitness located south of the Rosewood Estates residential neighborhood. This site was originally included with that Rosewood Estates plat. It was rezoned to general commercial in 2014. At that time, that is when the Anytime Fitness facility was constructed. The site on which the proposed childcare center would be built is 1.24 acres, and it is fronting, as I said, 149th Street to the north and County Road 42 to the south. The site itself is now zoned MX2 highway mixed use, which is, allows for daycares as permitted uses in that district. The plans provided by the applicant show the proposed project would meet the standards of the zoning ordinance for the proposed use. So the site itself, as I said, is located just south of the Rosewood Estates neighborhood in between Biscayne Avenue and Business Parkway on the north side of County Road 42. Further west of here would be the intersection of Highway 3 with County Road 42, and then east, the County Road 42 continues on and curves to the north. So the site plan shows the facility being in the south portion of that site. Access into the site would be made by an internal roadway making use of an existing curb cut just west of the subject parcel. The site itself is, as I said, 1.24 acres in size, zoned MX2 highway, highway mixed use, and is guided in the city's comprehensive land use plan for community commercial. With regards to the site standards, the site does meet all the required setbacks for this zoning district. There's an additional 20-foot setback required for the rear yard from the south due to that being a budding County Road 42, a arterial street. Also, the maximum lot coverage is below, or the lot coverage for the site is below the maximum of 75%. Total number of stalls required for the site for parking is 40. That's calculated using one stall per five children. With 148 children, that's 30 stalls, and an additional one stall per room, and there's nine rooms being proposed in this center, would add nine stalls. And then also parking for facility transportation, such as a bus or a van. In this case, that would be an additional single stall, showing a total of 40 stalls required and provided on the plan. Since we have a little bit zoomed-in site plan here, I will also just describe, there is a trash enclosure located in the northwest portion here, and then there's an outdoor storage shed in the southwest corner. The surrounding the building are different outdoor areas, preschool play yard, toddler, infant yard, an outdoor classroom, and within those areas are some toddler turf, which is a kind of an artificial turf to allow for easier walking, as well as fall-down areas that are softer for the playground areas themselves. The applicant hasn't provided specific information related to fencing on there, although the renderings provided by the applicant show a black picket-style ornamental fence that would be applied for and receive a permit for administratively following site plan approval. The applicant's elevations show a mix of material, both light and brown brick, as well as a simulated wood steel lap siding. It's accented with stone veneer, and there's no EPIS, that external insulation facade system. None of that is shown on the plans. Up to 10% is allowed by the code. The building height, the center portion of the building is 24 feet in height. The majority of the building itself will be 17 feet in height. This is below the 35-foot maximum. As I said, there's an outdoor storage shed and a trash enclosure. Those are shown in the elevations provided by the applicant to be constructed materials that are complementary with the principal structure. Here are the elevations showing those mix of materials. This is showing the entrance, front entrance here, darker brick wainscoting with a little bit lighter above it. Further up would be that brick, or that wood, simulated wood lap siding. The rear side shows a lot more windows, but those same similar materials shown here, neutral earth tones provided. And then just further renderings of the architecture of the building itself, showing those colors and materials for the site, and overall architectural renderings on a three-quarter perspective. And then again, here's the trash enclosure, storage building, and a sign elevation. It should be noted that signs are applied for and approved administratively through the building permit process. So a condition of approval would be the submittal of a building or a sign permit for review by staff. The applicant's landscaping plan meets the requirements of the code. 25 trees total are required. 18 trees are required just based on the size of the site itself. An additional 10 trees are required to accompany the parking lot landscaping. Parking lot needs to be landscaped at 10% of the total parking lot area with a parking lot area of 15,910 feet. 1591 square feet of parking lot must be landscaped, and that is provided through that center island. Some additional landscaping here on the edge of the, edge of the driveway and along the northern portion of the driveway here. In addition to the trees, there are foundation plantings. The minimum requirement of one per 10 linear feet of building perimeter requires 52 foundation plantings. The applicant's plans show 94 foundation plantings. Those are mainly focused around the entrance to the building, in some of the parking lot landscaping around the sign, and then as screening from the parking lot toward the Sewer and water will come from existing stubs in 149th Street West. Stormwater will also travel through the system, private system in the site to the storm sewer in 149th as well. There's a retaining wall shown on the western perimeter easement, kind of along this portion of the site. In discussing this with engineering staff, either an encroachment agreement or repositioning that retaining wall to avoid the need for an encroachment agreement would be solutions to accommodate that retaining wall there. In conversations with the applicant, it's likely that they will just shift that retaining wall a little bit closer to the building to avoid any risk of having to remove that wall should work be needed within that easement area. So just a couple other things before getting into the recommendation itself. The applicant had also provided a lighting plan that shows 30-foot tall pole lights and wall-mounted lights placed nine feet above the ground. That is within the maximum 30-foot height for the zoning district. No lights will be located within 100 feet of residential uses, and a photometric study was provided by the applicant that demonstrated conformance with the code requirements. With that being said, staff is recommending approval of the site plan, subject to the conditions before you. The parks and rec, land dedication is being recommended by the Parks and Recreation Director to be paid as a fee in lieu of land dedication. That amount shown there. Applicant shall receive a sign permit prior to construction of any sign, site signage, and then some of the other development fees and working with the engineer on that retaining wall as conditions of approval. With that being said, staff is happy to take any questions. The applicant is also here to speak to any questions that staff is unable to address.
Thank you, Anthony. Are there any questions at this time from the commission? Yeah, Commissioner Whitman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No concerns or anything? Just a question for you, Anthony. So in the photometric study, is that something typical that applicants provide to show, show evidence that they are complying with the zoning code related to lighting?
Yeah, Commissioner Whitman, the applicant did provide a photometric study. That's something that we ask for. The maximum lumens are 1.0 lumen at any property line of a commercial or non-residential use and 0.5 lumen from a residential use. And that was included with the packet, but because it's so small and the, the number of lumens are indecipherable on the screen here, it was not included in the presentation.
Okay, thanks. And I, yeah, I just, I think that's the kind of information I'm always looking for, that sort of supportive documentation to show that there's compliance with the zoning code. So that's great that staff asks for it. It's also great that the applicant has provided it, you know?
Yeah, that's always good.
Any other questions for staff?
No.
Anthony, can you, this might be more for the applicant, but just the south toddler, I think it's the toddler play area is super close to the, to the boundary. Can you talk a little bit about the set, like, how far is that realistically back from 42?
Sure. So it's, it's set 10 feet back from the property line, and then the property line is about 50 feet from the actual curb or edge of County Road 42. So it's about 60 feet back.
60 feet back.
Yeah, and then there's trees and landscaping between there.
Between there, okay. Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you, Anthony. At this time, we will open up this item for the public hearing. Anyone that would like to speak on this item may do so at this time coming to the podium, stating your name and address for the record.
Do we have a time limit by chance?
Um.
I just want to make sure. I'm used to speaking at school board, so. Elise Mademan, and my home address is 11665 Azur Court in Virgo Heights. My interest in this is I am the owner of Mademan Properties, which is the building to the west of this property coming in here. Former owner of Anytime Fitness, current owner of the Sola Salon that is in that building currently. Just a couple items I wanted to either bring up. If a question can be answered, great. If not, if I can just get a response back at some point or learn how I could get that information. I think my first part is here is I am very excited to have new businesses coming into Rosemount. This is by no means something that we don't want, a new business here. My concern is what is just to the west of this is a New Horizons daycare. My question is daycare, a building, another daycare. Just looking for that variety in our city, looking out for our 20-plus small business owners that can be in our Anytime Fitness and the over 700 members, or excuse me, of the Sola and our 700 members at Anytime, of having a variety within a certain block, et cetera. So that's my concern of why do we have two of them basically within eye shot, when there's, seems to be other space here in Rosemount. More major concern is now looking at, I'm glad we can see some of this color footage, with Sola Salon, if you haven't maybe been out there, you're welcome to stop on in, take a look at our facility, and how many windows actually face this side between the Sola and then the Anytime. And just keeping that in mind when what's going to be placed outside of those windows. As it's set up right now, it appears to be a trash can or trash receptacle, if you will, building and a parking lot. On the Sola side, I am fine with a parking lot. I'd rather take that over, you know, the kid play area, et cetera, as far as the people that are in there. My thoughts would be if that could be somehow moved to the other side or connected to their building, or not right outside of our windows where our business owners inside that Sola have their clients looking directly out at that. Now, I'm, on renderings, it's a little bit harder, maybe it'll look a little bit nicer, not as obvious, but just something to consider of what that outside looks like from both ways of it. And then as far as the signage, is that going to be on the 149th Street or the County Road 42 side? I think would just be my other question on some of where that might be. And then you just spoke about the retaining wall. That actually was a question of mine that I had stopped over and spoken with Anytime Fitness, because they do have some pretty large windows that face that way, and what that would look like, providing some safety for both sides, children, some privacy for those working out in the gym, there's not any window coverings. Are they going to be looking right out at, you know, a bunch of children playing in the yard? And I obviously understand too, this is a time thing. I'd be interested to know their hours of service, if they're open maybe 6:00 to 5:00, 6:00 to 6:00. That might help some of us alleviate some of those concerns of who's inside, outside, and the busyness of it. And as far as the lights in the parking lot, if there'd be like a timer, maybe they would go off when that building was no longer in use, and they would not be shining into those windows that face that area. That's probably my main concerns on that. Like you said, I want businesses to come into Rosemount. I just want to tell us to be smart and aesthetic, and when you're driving down 42, it's not daycare, 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 over and over. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And we will, just a matter of procedure here, we will answer the questions we are able to answer or have the applicant answer questions during the public hearing process. Staff will answer them at the end of the public hearing, but we will have the applicant address any questions that they're able to answer during the public hearing as well. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this item tonight? And Anthony, did you say we had the applicant here?
Yeah, yep.
If, if the applicant had come up, I know there's a couple questions in regards, that Elise just brought up, in regards to hours of operation and the parking lot lights, and potentially the signage location, although staff may know that answer too, but if you can address those, that would be great.
Sure. Peter Hilger, Ryler, excuse me, Ryler LLC. I'm the architect, North Oaks, Minnesota. Kind of a childcare expert, and yes, I'm guilty, I'm the one that helped get New Horizon put down the street. So that's why people come to me, help them with their childcare centers. But the advantage here is that when you see a concentration of childcare centers, you see a concentration of need. This is, you're getting a lot of rooftops in Rosemount, a lot of industry moving in, very large one coming in here very soon. That's what drives the need and demand for childcare. So we like this site, because there is, just like you see auto dealerships in a lot of places, sometimes there's that cohesion that happens with having a market that is concentrated with different offerings of childcare on normal commuting routes. So that's really the strategy involved with any, any childcare coming in. With respect to some of the specific comments of the, the audience member here, certainly we want to be a good neighbor. I personally did not take into account what your windows were looking at from your facility to ours, but I think we still have a fair amount of compatibility there. If you look at the landscaping plan, we do have our trash enclosure, which is consistent materials located in the corner, which appears to be outside of a fenced area on your plan. And maybe you can, can you navigate to the?
You should go left or right on the arrows.
Yep.
Let me go to the landscape.
I'll go right a few more.
So you don't have the landscape?
There is, one more.
I don't, you didn't have a landscape?
There it is. There it is. So what I was, what I'm looking at, it's hard to see here, but this area right here, this is where our trash enclosure is, and you have a fence located there. Then, we do have a short retaining wall. This isn't a very tall retaining wall at all, it's fairly short. But this whole area right here is basically designated for an outdoor classroom. And what, what that sort of means in the childcare environment is they put like slightly raised, for preschoolers primarily, like raised planter beds for them to have dirt, gardening, play, that kind of environment, other sorts of activities that are age-appropriate. And that's what will be on that, that particular side of the building.
Can you take, no, there is no fence. You've never been to the Sola that area?
Well, I'm looking at, yes, I have been to the site, but I've been focusing on my site, not on this one.
That's good. You've clearly dealt with that.
Okay, well, I'm sorry. I'm just saying that this, this is where the optimal location is for our trash enclosure. We do have some landscaping. We can certainly move some landscaping around if necessary to shield that. But in terms of service for the truck to come in, it's located in a position where they can easily service it and then move around and back out. Now, also-
The, the enclosure, it's fully enclosed, right? Which is to say that from the property to the west, we won't be looking at a dumpster, we'd be looking at a wall?
Yes. It's, it's not fully enclosed on the roof. It's fully enclosed horizontally, 7 foot 2 inches high. So you will not, especially because your site is lower than, than with the elevation of this trash enclosure, you really will not be able to see into it. The retaining wall will be, we'll, we'll move the retaining wall back outside of the easement. That's something that was just kind of overlooked on our part. We have the room to do that. It'll be placed right underneath the fence line on the easement line. That's not a problem. In our corner over here, we have windows that are very strongly focused on that particular classroom environment, which is now exposed to your trash enclosure. So it sort of goes a little bit to both ways here. But, you know, if there's something that we can do to, you know, shield a little bit here, we're certainly willing to look at that. Anything that happens within that utility easement, however, which I think crosses on both of the lines, right? It's 10-foot and 10-foot on both property lines here. That's something that's of, potentially of mutual interest. As far as the lighting question, most of the lighting is, in the parking lot, is that the higher, just so that we can have fewer of them and we can achieve our density. The primary lighting is along the building itself at nine feet, primarily to provide lighting at the perimeter walkway, which goes around three sides of the building almost completely and most of the fourth. So that is where a predominant amount of that lighting is, and it's all low-cut-off LEDs that are right above the sidewalk. So beyond that, the activity that will be facing that particular building will all be preschool age. And so I don't know if I have the true applicants here, the owners of Today's Life, if you want to ask them further questions about their operations, but I think I addressed your question.
Do you happen to know the hours of operation for the childcare?
6:30 to 6:00.
6:30 to 6:00, just Monday through Friday, or?
Yes, Monday through Friday.
Okay. Okay. And then I think that, there was another question on, are the lights, parking lights going to be on at all times, or are they on timers that will go off?
The, well, we normally design our parking lot lighting to be on a timer, a photo cell and time clock.
Okay.
So those are adjustable by the, by the client.
Okay.
Madam Chair, the code requires non-essential lighting to be turned off outside of business hours except for stuff for security.
Thank you, Anthony.
Yep.
Okay.
If through discussions with city engineering staff, that retaining wall needs to get moved back, what, have you thought about what is going to happen with that shed in the back and then that outdoor classroom area and kind of shrinking that down? Is that going to reconfigure the site much and the plan of the building?
No, actually, on the plan, the fence is on the easement line. So by putting the retaining wall under the fence line, we're basically, you know, maybe knocking off about a foot out of the total width of that. So it really doesn't affect anything.
Hearing the, this question might be more for staff, but hearing with these three buildings in a row, a real high density of traffic that are coming in early in the morning and then probably later in the afternoon, on 149th Street, there were a lot of that is, that traffic's going to be coming in. Has there been any discussion about the number of vehicles that are going to be coming in on 149th Street between 6:00 and 8:00, and then from 5:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon between those three buildings? It's pretty, those three buildings are going to have a lot of demand over that time of day.
So, yeah, they, they will. Those are uses, particularly the daycares, that do have kind of their own specific rush hours. It was designed for commercial traffic. The site itself is between the subject parcel and then the parcels to the east will all be using one shared access point to minimize those traffic movements that would create conflict. And then also, on County Road 42 and Biscayne and Business Parkway, those have all been designed to handle future commercial development in that area. And the county does have long-term plans for, or I wouldn't say long-term, but they have plans for signalization at Biscayne, you know, as part of their County Road 42 traffic management plan.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I would just also add, since it came up, the question about the signage. Again, a sign permit will be required to be submitted by the applicant prior to installing any signage. The plans did show a concept location along 149th Street West, and then I think you probably saw in some of the renderings, wall signage. At first glance, it all appears to conform with the requirements of the city code for signage, but that would be reviewed in more detail with an actual sign permit application.
And Anthony, to the earlier comment, it looks like the sign is at the northeast corner.
Correct.
So it would be further away from the neighboring parcel.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Anthony, for those responses. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this item this evening? Seeing then, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Kenninger, seconded by Commissioner Boogai. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Public hearing is now closed. And so with that, we have this item before us this evening. Are there any other follow-up questions or comments from the commission?
I think, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple things. One, on the, on the concern about daycare road, right? I get that, but, you know, on the, on the flip side, it is the property owner, and, and we're looking at what is allowed as a use. We don't have, we're not looking to, I guess, discriminate on uses, that, you know, there's already a use there, we can't have another. That's not within our standards that we're looking at. So if a property owner wants to have a particular use- So if a property owner wants to have a particular use, that use is allowed, subject to certain criteria and standards, then that's what we're looking at. And one standard is not, well, there's already that type of use in the vicinity. So it's kind of like, yeah, sometimes you see the auto dealerships close by, or a restaurant, you know, a couple of fast food restaurants nearby or something, but definitely understand your concern on that. The other, just also on those concerns, and maybe this is a question for staff, it sounds like, you know, the adjacent businesses might have some concerns over this development. The architect on behalf of the applicant has said, hey, we're willing to work with you, neighbor. What can we do, I guess, as part of this process to ensure that that good collaboration happens between neighbors, rather than just allowing them to go at it, you know, and assuming that it's going to be all nice?
Well, certainly as staff, we take phone calls and concerns and complaints and put people together and share contact information when available and, you know, to that extent. But if a property is in full compliance with the zoning ordinance, there isn't a whole lot of teeth that the city can do to force any further compliance with the code. We do as best we can to, I guess, facilitate conversations. If we get a call that says, hey, there's a light shining here, we'll call the, you know, that property, the other property owner and say, hey, can you angle your light differently or turn that light off or something, address this issue? But otherwise, it's ultimately up to two property owners to get along, and neighbors should work to resolve their issues amicably amongst one another.
Yeah. And I would certainly hope, you know, I like this project, but I hear those concerns, and I would just hope that the applicant, architect, you know, all of you work with your neighbors here and just make sure that everyone's reasonably happy about the development coming in, and so some good collaboration takes place. And, yeah, at the very least, I just hope that happens. Maybe in the context of the retaining wall as well, working with the city engineer, just something to keep in mind through that process if that relates to any of those concerns. So those are my comments.
I would echo that, I think, obviously now is the time to try and, if there's small landscape shifts and small things like that that can be done to help alleviate concerns of the neighbor to the west, that would be considerate, and now is the time to do it. You know, you can't, once it gets built and you see it, the changes can't be made. So I would encourage the property owners to connect, share contact information, and try and work together on making sure that this is a harmonious adventure for both. And I also am excited to, I would echo, you said it perfectly, Commissioner Whitman, on our purview tonight and as the planning commission is, around is the site zoned and guided appropriately for the use, and if so, does it meet the requirements? You know, we can't discriminate between a daycare versus, you know, another type of use coming in there, but it is exciting to see the businesses coming into town and to have this business, the businesses here, and I think that this building looks great. I love the earth tones, I love the windows, I think it's going to be a really nice-looking building in that area. So with that, I will make a motion to approve the site plan review, allowing Today's Life Childcare to construct a childcare center at 2634 149th Street West, subject to conditions one through five as listed in the staff report.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Keniger, seconded by Commissioner Whitman. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to our next item this evening, which is a request by QuickTrip for approval of a PUD final site and building plan and conditional use permit. And I will turn it over to Eric.
Madam Chair. So today, we have an application in by QuickTrip, they're requesting a final site and building plan and a conditional use permit to construct an 11,000-square-foot convenience store, a detached accessory car wash with a single bay, and then an automobile fuel station on a 4.79 acre site within the Prestwick Place Platt area. The site is located in kind of a hot development area in town, right near the Lifetime Development. It is on the south corner of Highway, County Road 42 in Akron, directly south of the Roars So the site is 4.79 acres, it is guided community commercial, and it is zoned MX-2. As I said, there'll be an 11,000-square-foot convenience store, kind of located in the extreme southern portion of the site. There'll be a one-bay detached car wash on the east side, I'm sorry, on the west side of the site with drive aisles. And then there'll be a 40-foot by 20-foot fuel canopy directly north of the convenience store that will have five pump islands and 20 gas station pumps. So in terms of setbacks, as you can see, the building is a pretty large site, or the site is pretty large, and the building has greatly exceeded the setbacks needed for both parking and the buildings itself. So there's really no concerns there in terms of screening or setbacks from adjacent properties or the main arterials. So site access, there'll be two main access points to the property. The first will be on the new private street, upper 144th Street West. This is a private street that runs between Abbey Field and Akron, directly south of the Roars Apartment Project, and it will be north of this site. There will be a access in the kind of northwest corner of the site here. There'll also be a shared access with the property, which is a daycare, again, to the west of this parcel. But the main access will be off of this 144th Street West, and the shared access will largely be for cars exiting this car wash bay here. So traffic circulation, cars will enter from the north, they will, you know, either enter to the east to access the car wash, or go towards the pump islands or the convenience store and additional parking in the southwest corner. As you can see, the fuel stations kind of located between the car wash and the pump islands, there's ample room for underground storage for the fuel tanks to maneuver and access them. So in terms of parking, required parking is about 57 stalls, they provided 63. So it's a little overparked, but not really by much. So as a condition of approval, the only area where this doesn't fit with the code currently, because it was based on the standards of the previous code that occurred before June, the applicant will be required to show six stacking spaces where the car wash is in these stacking lanes. They'll also be required to show stacking spaces where the pump islands are. So they'll need one for each entry to the pump island and exit, and they need to be nine by 18 feet. As a condition of approval, we're asking that the applicant resubmit plans prior to pulling a building permit showing the stacking of both the car wash and the pump islands. Additionally, a specific use standard for the site is 24 feet between pump islands. It's currently showing 21.5, which again was the old standard. We're just asking them to update it to the new minimum distance prior to any building As you can see, here's the landscape plan. So the landscape plan requires a total of 60 trees, and they have provided 60 trees. They're largely around the perimeter of the property, lots of trees on the, screening the parking areas that front Akron, and then also trees kind of screening the car wash and building that would then be against the adjacent property. There's more plantings and trees to the north that front the new road that would be overlooking the apartments. In terms of foundational plantings, they've provided 128, when they required about 70. So there's a decent amount of landscaping going on that will provide screening from the adjacent properties and then the thoroughfares. Here's our photometric plan, which you obviously probably cannot see at all, but they are well within compliance of their photometric plan, particularly on the eastern boundary where they will be sharing a property line with an adjacent building. The poles will be mounted on 16 feet in height, which is within the code, and the plan adheres to the requirements that does not exceed one lumen at the eastern or northern borders of the adjacent properties. Some additional floor plan and elevation. As you can see, the site also contains a large stormwater pond to the north, takes up a pretty significant amount of the site. It's a kind of regional stormwater pond for the adjacent developments of the Prestwick Place Platt. Here are elevations of the QuickTrip, hopefully everyone is familiar with their kind of coloring and ethos. As you can see, the building facade will be made up of brick with stucco accents and will be topped with a green material metal roof, very similar to the one currently downtown. Car wash will also be brick with kind of the green accents and stucco. So in terms of the conditional use permit, they satisfy all the seven general standards for all CUPs. In addition, there are 12 specific standards specifically for auto fuel stations, of which condition three and five, as I had mentioned before, the stacking for the gas pumps, and then the minimum spacing between the pump islands is not satisfied on these current plans, but as a condition of approval, they will augment those to become in compliance with the code. And with that, I can answer any questions, but we're recommending approval, subject to conditions one through 10, and then recommending the city council approve the conditional use permit at the next official meeting.
Thank you, Eric. I'm going to start with questions. Can you go back to the traffic flow in? Is there, so if users were to head west, like whether they come out of the car wash or the gas pumps and they headed west on that access road, that also curves back up to the same, like that curves back up to 140, what did you say, 143rd?
Upper 140th?
Or up one?
Are you talking about this eastern, or I'm sorry, this western? Yeah, so there would be a shared access that would be shared with the daycare going here, that would then also attach to the new private road.
Okay.
It is not shown on these plans.
Right, that's what I wanted to confirm, that like they can leave there and go back to 140, upper 143rd as well. You had discussions with the applicant on adding the extra space in at the gas pumps, and is there, like, is that going to constrict? Right now, it seems to have a lot of flow there between kind of the last pump to the west, or the last drive aisle to the west, and over? So if we-
So add about a little under 10 feet to the canopy. You know, it may encroach on some of those northern parking spots, but as I said earlier, it's also overparked, it has more spaces than needed. So there can always be a reduction in parking without any implications for being out of compliance with the code, or, you know, things can kind of be moved around.
Okay.
They have enough parking to kind of play with.
Right, right. I guess that would be my thing, is if there's enough parking there, I'd rather not play with the space for movement, because I feel like when you have that many, I feel like it's going to be a popular place, and I feel like it's going to be busy. And, you know, if you've been around Holiday or QuickTrip in town, trying to move around them is tight, so this is a lot more cars.
Well, I think that's one of the reasons why in the updated code, we have the new standards from 21.5 feet to 24. You know, cars are a lot larger than they've been in the past, and so the drive islands need more space. If you've been to any of the downtown Highway 3 stations, sometimes it can be pretty gnarly trying to maneuver around.
Yeah, that's what I want to try and avoid that here.
But again, as you will see, the stacking is also not shown, so I mean, a lot of cars will also be kind of stacked in the temporary parking. So there should be plenty of maneuverability to the site.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions from commission?
Making the canopy bigger doesn't pose any problem, we don't have to have any, there's not any magic to the 120 feet that it is now. If it goes to 130, that's not a problem, it's just a bigger canopy.
Yep. Yep, and the canopy setbacks are the same as the principal building under the code. So, you know, as you saw, the setbacks were very significant, so there's really no worry of a little additional canopy even getting near the minimum.
Any other questions for Eric at this time?
Okay. Any applicant is here to answer any questions as well?
Thank you. This item is a public hearing item, so at this time, we will open up the public hearing. Anyone that would like to speak on this item may do so at this time. Coming to the podium, stating your name and address for the record. Seeing that, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Keniger, seconded by Commissioner Whitman to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Public hearing is now closed. So we've got this item before us. I will just say, before we move forward on this item, I think it's very exciting, we hear from lots of residents that we need another gas station, so thank you for bringing this to our, another one to our community. I think it will be a great addition out in that area of town. Yes, Commissioner Whitman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, and I agree. Great, great project, much needed, a lot of people are going to be very happy, and I echo your prediction that it's going to be a busy place. I have a, for staff, I think, just comments or questions, but we get sometimes these, our role is to make sure that the project complies with all standards and criteria so we can make an educated decision on whether to approve it or not. And sometimes the applicant doesn't submit something, it's not quite ready. In this case, we have the stacking situation where the zoning code changed, and so now they're going to have to do some updating. And I get all that, and that's, you know, that's okay in a sense, but my question is, why not get that information first before bringing it to the planning commission? So we often get this where, well, the applicant hasn't provided it. Well, then don't schedule it for a hearing, you know? Schedule it for a hearing after all information is there, where we can make the decision. Otherwise, it's being left out, we're asking questions, we're hoping that it's going to comply eventually, but we're not able to fully perform our roles and our duties because it's taken away from us, and we're kind of kicking the can and hoping the building permit process sorts it out. So I guess, I guess I just wonder, like, why not make it ripe for us in the first place?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioner Whitman, I can take a stab at that too. Oftentimes, it's a timeliness aspect based on the developer's plans and their desired timing for construction. Especially one thing that we certainly strive for in Rosemount is timely review and approval or recommendations for approval of development projects at the direction of our city council. So that's something that we, as staff, typically operate under. Your question or your concern about conditioning certain items for approval as a part of the application or process, staff often makes an educated assumption based on the significance of the either left-out or minor tweaks that would be required as a condition of approval specific to this application. I know the applicant is here, and if the chair would like to call on them to potentially address the requirement to shift the pump islands, that extra square feet, they may be able to provide a better answer as well. I know that Eric did- to make sure that they can accommodate it on there, and it's not just, we hope it works, but that they can confidently demonstrate that it does work as a part of the plan.
Yeah, thank you.
At this time, if the applicant would like to come forward and address that question? I'd like to have you state your name and address for the record.
Yep. Dean George, 1626 Oak Street, La Crosse, Wisconsin. We can accommodate the additional room on the canopy, 100%. There's space on that east property line to shift the entire site 10 feet that side, so adding 10 extra feet doesn't inhibit the movement on the outside at all. We can do it without losing parking if we want to. If you guys want to see less parking, that's fine, but the reason the site's overparked is because between AM and PM peak hours, we have between eight and 14 employees on staff all the time, so they suck up a decent chunk of that parking themselves. This is why we always have to overstride parking. The 40 by 130 canopy was, I think, your comment. That is a specially constructed canopy for us, the struts beams move a little ways. That's why the 21 and a half is our standard, that's why we have it on all of our sites. So it is a special request to our canopy builder to put a special canopy in, but we can do it. We confirm that they will do it for us on this site, so it's not a problem. I know there's a lot of concern on the circulation vis a vis the other site downtown, which is not built to the same standards, I don't think. I think there's eight feet on the one side and 14 feet on the rail side, so it's, that site's a little tight. We can't accommodate, we can't accommodate all the Highway 3 traffic on that site, we certainly can't accommodate any of the new development in Rosemont at that site, so we're very happy to have this site going up in this particular area, so.
And you will keep the other locations?
Absolutely, oh yeah. Yep, there's, that site was probably the first metro base site we put up, probably nearing 30 years ago, and we've got 10 pounds of stuff in a five-pound bag there, so we're happy to have another site in Rosemont, for sure.
Okay. And so you've addressed the drive aisle spacing, the stacking, you also don't see any issue with?
No, I think the standard was 18 feet long, so there's 55 feet of clearance behind and 37 and a half feet clearance in front, so there's no problem there. And then the six feet, the six cars in the car wash won't be a problem either.
Okay.
It's already largely there, they just need to show it.
Yeah, the lack of a stacking exhibit doesn't mean the site is not in conformance with the code or in compliance with the code, they just need to provide something to demonstrate that fact.
I think the principal reason, I guess, to provide a little background, why the pumps are the way they are, not wider, is because we don't want to give people the illusion that they should be able to drive between the two pumps. So if you say, you know, have a nine-foot car and eight-foot car and the pumps are 26 feet wide, someone could say, car, car, oh, I can drive right through, which we don't want.
Right, right.
So that's why the 21.6 is standard for us.
Never occurred to me that someone would want to drive between two sets of cars filling with gas, but I suppose that's why you're in that position.
I mean, there could be a situation where if they're dropping fuel on that west side, there's a tanker there, they can't, they don't want to drive all the way around, they say, oh, there's a gap here, I'll just go through there.
I'll just shoot right through.
So lesson to anyone in the audience and at home listening, don't drive between them. There's not enough room. Okay? Commissioner Whitman, did you have any follow-on questions?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. Thank you for the confirmation, appreciate that. And I'm going to say something, and please don't take this as snarky toward you or this project. What you said is good information that's helpful, what's better is to have plans actually showing it. And so for me, like for any project coming through, and I'm kind of broadcasting this for anyone watching, any future project applicant, please make sure that all standards and criteria are addressed in your submittals before coming to the planning commission. I think that's the best practice, makes our job very easy, but once again, I appreciate you coming up and confirming, and I'm prepared to move forward and approve this project.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant while we have?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the commission before we move forward? Okay, we can entertain a motion?
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the planned unit development final site and building plan for QuickTrip to construct a convenience store, detached car wash, and an automobile fuel station, subject to conditions one through 10.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Bugai and seconded by Commissioner Ellis. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. And we have one more motion on this item, I believe. Right?
That's right. Yep, there is. I'll make another motion here to recommend city council approve a conditional use permit allowing automobile fuel station.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Bugai, seconded by Commissioner Whitman. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. This item will move forward, and this item does move forward to city council on September 17. I did not close the loop on our first item this evening, today's childcare, that item, with our approval this evening, that item does not move forward to city council, so the decision tonight was final on that item unless there is an appeal, then it will, it will move forward to city council only if there's an appeal on our decision. And with that, we'll move on to our next public hearing item this evening, which is a request by David Weekly Homes for a variance from the rear yard setback requirement for principal structure in the R1 PUD low-density traditional residential planned unit development and zoning district. Julia, I will turn this over to you.
Right, give us a second. All right, so a little bit of overview, so David Weekly Homes is requesting a variance from the minimum rear yard setback requirement for principal structures in the R1 PUD low-density traditional residential planning and development district to allow for a home to be built at 15035 Ard Gillan Road. So a little bit of an overview, the subject property is located within the Amberfields Planning and Development Area. The Amberfields PUD agreement included multiple deviations from the city zoning code. Some of those deviations included a reduction in minimum lot area, lot width, front yard setback, side yard setback, and rear yard setback, and also an increase in the maximum allowed impervious surface coverage for that area as a whole. The applicant today is requesting a variance to reduce the minimum rear yard setback standard from 20 feet to 16 feet for the construction of a new home. The applicant did explore alternative designs for the home, but was not able to make one work without the need for a variance. So a little bit of an overview of the site location, so the property is located within Amberfields 10th Edition, which you can see is outlined in red on this aerial photo. Property is part of the preliminary plat for Amberfields 5th Edition, which the 5th Edition is majority of this upper area closer to 245th Street West, and Amberfields 10th Edition is that Phase 2 of the Amberfields 5th Edition preliminary plat area. Little bit closer view here is an April 2024 aerial image, so you can see the sites outlined in red as well. And then here's a proposed property survey, so it'll kind of explain the need for this variance. So you can see this property is angled slightly in the back. It is adjacent to an outlaw, which you can see on this aerial image, to the northwest. And then also, there is a larger drainage utility area, Outlet A as well, to the south of this property. So because of that larger angle on the south part of the property and due to the larger drainage utility easement on the property, they are constrained on this western portion, you can see outlined kind of by the mouse. It's 16 feet. The eastern part of the rear yard does meet that minimum 20-foot setback, you can see it's 23 feet, but due to that angle, they are needing that four-foot variance to meet that 20-foot setback. The applicant did also submit a narrative stating that a reduction in the home square footage would not work as some of the functioning rooms within the house would be altered because of that. Also, the attached garage would not be able to be reduced as we do have square footage minimum requirements for attached garages. Also, the building would not be able to be moved towards the front of the property line as it is meeting that minimum requirement of 20 feet as well. So due to those restrictions, this is where the proposed home would be able to be situated due to those unique circumstances. So according to Section 1195G, there are five criteria for the Board of Appeals and Adjustments to review when considering a variance request. The five criteria used to assess each request along with staff findings are listed on the page in front of you. So number one, the variance request is in harmony with the purposes and intent of the ordinance, which that finding staff finds that the request is in harmony with the purposes and intent of the ordinance. Single-family detached dwellings are permitted use within this zoning district. Number two, the variance is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The site is designated for that residential use, so the variance is consistent with that designation. Number three, the property owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner. The finding is variance, the variance permits the property owner to use the property in a reasonable manner as the subject property is proposed to contain a single-family detached dwelling with a patio, which is consistent with the majority of the properties within this subdivision and also Amberfields Development Area. Four, there are unique circumstances to the property which are not created by the landowner. Staff finds that there are unique circumstances to the property. A portion of the northwest corner of the lot is shaped at an angle due to the shape of the land where the block of homes was platted. There are also larger drainage utility easement areas that are shown across Outlets A and B, which I had pointed out earlier, which both of those, the proposed home would not be able to be moved closer to the front property line as it would not meet the minimum front yard setback requirement of 20 feet, and would not be able to be decreased inside due to factors as functionality of the interior of the home, minimum garage square footage that is required for a single-family detached dwelling. And then number five, granting a variance has not altered their essential character of the locality, and then staff finds that the requested variance would not alter the essential character of locality. The surrounding neighborhood is made up of single-family detached homes with a vast majority of them being similar in size to the proposed home. So in front of you for recommended action, a motion by the planning commission acting as the Board of Appeals and Adjustments to adopt a resolution approving a variance to the R1 PUD low-density traditional residential planning and development rear yard setback standard for principal structures from 20 feet to 16 feet at 15035 Ard Gillan Road. I can take any questions that the commission may have, and I do believe the applicant is also in the audience as well.
Thank you, Julia. I just had one question I wanted to confirm. The lot coverage, I think that they had like an eight by 12 or nine by 12 patio in there too?
Yep.
So the lot coverage right now, though, is pretty close to that 50%?
It's meeting, so this is kind of a wide aerial of that survey, but from their breakdown that they provided on the impervious surface coverage on the proposed property survey, it met the requirement.
It met the requirement, but there's not, like, I just want to make sure that they know there's not any room really for any, anymore. Like, you can't widen the patio or do anything else, okay?
Yeah, the applicant is aware that there are setback regulations for patios and accessory structures, and then also that none of those structures can be located within any drainage utilities and areas as well.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because it's tight with that. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Julia? Okay, thank you. Thank you. This item is a public hearing item, so at this time, we will open up the public hearing. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item may do so at this time. Coming to the podium stating your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Kinniger, seconded by Commissioner Whitman. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, public hearing is now closed. So with that, I think, I want to thank staff for the way you did this and writing this up. It's very, I think this is a great solution, given it's just this one lot, and given the unique shape of the lot, it makes sense to me. And I think also, the other thing for me was the fact that it does not back up to another house, so it's not getting closer, like, there's no resident behind them or on the side of them that's impacted by this, by this variance. The side with the variance is an outlaw, and behind them is an outlawed in road, so I think that is helpful.
I also appreciated the applicant's narrative of just setting out, you know, setting out what their thought process was, I thought that was helpful as well.
And the different things they tried to correct, to do to avoid.
They took some, this wasn't their first thing that they tried and said, okay, we'll just go with this. I appreciated that.
So with that, we can entertain a motion?
What is the motion?
Let me get it up to us.
So I'll move that the, that the planning commission acting as the Board of Appeals adopt a resolution approving the variance from R1 PUD low, excuse me, low residential traditional residential planned unit development.
Oh, you just, we just lost the motion.
Struggling already?
Always got the control bar.
Low-density traditional residential planned unit development rear yard setback standard for principal structures from 20 feet to 16 feet at 15035 Ard Gillian Road. Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Ellis, seconded by Commissioner Bugai. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. This item was approved by the planning commission acting as the Board of Appeals and Adjustments this evening. That decision is final, there is a 10-day appeals period. Anyone that would like to appeal our decision this evening may do so contacting City Hall. And with that, we will move on to the next item on our agenda this evening, which is RGA Holdings, a request to rezone approximately 211 acres of land located west of Blaine Avenue and north of County Road 42, except for the property owned by Saint, Saint John's?
Lutheran Church.
Yeah, yes, except for the property owned by the church, and I will turn that over to Anthony. We don't do know when the screen flips on us as we're reading it, you guys.
One, one point of clarification, the actual size is closer to 217 acres versus the 211 that was in the staff report. So I will also remind the commission that, if that is, I can't recall if that was in the recommended action?
It's not in the motion.
Okay. So just a summary of this request, the applicant has been working to assemble the subject parcels located north of County Road 42 and west of Blaine Avenue, except for the parcel owned by the church at the corner. It's approximately 217 acres in area, they've been assembling these parcels to market for future development in conformance with the city's comprehensive plan, which designates this land as business park, future land uses. The site is currently zoned AG agriculture, and the proposed rezoning would be to B2 employment, which most closely relates to what was formerly the Business Park, BP Business Park Zoning The site itself, as I said, is north and west of that intersection with County Road 42 and Blaine Avenue. It extends west to what will be a future extension of Audrey Avenue to the north here, which will connect County Mara Trail. Further west is Akron Avenue, and then east of the site is Highway 52. Site is made up of a mix of tillable acreage as well as some homestead residences and one commercial nursery located on Blaine Avenue here. As I said, the site itself is guided as shown on this excerpt from the city's comprehensive plan for business park type development. The proposed rezoning is consistent with this designation. Now also note, this sliver of commercial here was to accommodate some future extension of this roadway, therefore rezoning this as part of the overall rezoning request, staff finds consistent with the comp plan as it will be also serving the properties to the So here's an exhibit of the proposed amendment to the city's zoning map, showing the change from AG agriculture. The current zoning of the site in the southeast corner of the church is R1 low-density residential. That will remain the same on that site. There are no current development proposals submitted to the city for this site. This is simply a rezoning request to provide clarity for the applicant as they market this site to potential users. Any development that would occur on the site would come through the planning commission and city council, through the public review process for any required approvals. Staff anticipates approvals such as a plat to consolidate the site into one or more parcels, site plan review for one or more projects within the proposed rezoning area, and any other approvals that it may need, such as a conditional use permit or planned unit development agreement approval. Staff will, would like to let the planning commission know that an A U A R, which is a type of environmental review, has been approved for this site. That A U A R, which stands for Alternative Urban Area-Wide Review, anticipated two development scenarios, the first being a warehouse and distribution center, and the second being a daycare. other approvals that it may need, such as a conditional use permit or planned unit development agreement approval. Staff will, would like to let the Planning Commission know that an A U A R, which is a type of environmental review, has been approved for this site. That A U A R, which stands for Alternative Urban Area-Wide Review, anticipated two development scenarios, the first being a warehouse and distribution center and the second being a data center on that site. Both uses are considered allowed by the proposed zoning district. Additionally, to note to the Planning Commission, Cona Mera Trail is planned to extend to Blaine Avenue and connect with it at 140th Street East. That extension must be accommodated through the development of the site, and the road must meet the city's engineering standards for a collector road such as Cona Mera Trail. The exact alignment hasn't been determined, but it would be going from the eastern terminus of Cona Mera to 140th. Staff also has had conversations with the applicant about things to keep in mind in their discussion with future users who would wish to develop the site, particularly with the placement of any equipment that may generate noise or impacts on the adjacent properties such as the church or the residential parcels in Tallamore to the west. They could do that by placing those, that equipment in a way that it is not impacting those properties and to also provide screening between future development on the site and those parcels. As I said, this is consistent, this rezoning request is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, and staff is recommending approval of the rezoning from AG agriculture to B2 employment. And staff is happy to answer any questions. I know the applicant has a representative here who can speak to this request as well.
Thank you, Anthony. I have just a couple of questions. I wanted to clarify one thing you said early, earlier to make sure if I'm understanding correctly. Are you suggesting that, that with this rezoning action tonight, that we also have a strip that's zoned commercial?
No, no. There is a strip shown as commercial on the city's land use plan
Okay.
in future right-of-way.
Okay.
And so it's currently, that strip is currently zoned ag. The recommended rezoning is just to rezone it to B2 employment.
Okay, okay. So that would be different than that strip being on, like, comp plan shows it as commercial, we're going to make it business park then at this point?
Right, because it's a road serving, serving the commercial to the west as well as the future business park.
Okay, and then the Cona Mera piece is, so with the connection at, to Cona Mera and Blaine there, does that have, like, are you saying that Cona Mera has to go and connect at that intersection? Or could it connect up, like, could it run, could it, could it turn north and then head, head east?
Well, certainly it could, it'll curve.
Right, okay.
You know, the exact alignment is unknown.
We're planning to drive it through the, through that site most likely. We're going to take it most likely on the perimeters?
I think if you asked a developer of that site, they would want to do it in a way that works best for the site development. So if it's, if it's more than one user, perhaps it could go through the site.
Perhaps it would go through, okay.
If it's one user, they might try to find a way to go around it, but there's been no design work done on that extension.
Is the plan for those, so Tallamore has a couple roads that, that dead end there along the site, are those also intended to potentially connect?
I think if it works in a way that they could connect, then staff would, would be recommending that they be connected.
That they connect, okay. So if the road was to, to turn and head north, it would maybe make sense to connect them if the road heads more east first than it might, than it would obviously make sense.
Right, right, yep.
Okay, okay. And then the, the timing of the comp plan, like, roughly was 2018, 2017?
2018 is kind of when it was getting really fleshed out and then officially adopted. It's our, the city's 2040 comp plan.
Right.
And so following the tenure cycle, I guess you could call this the 2020 comp plan.
Okay, so, so I'm just trying to think about, like, when Tallamore was, was developed, if that was when this was, like...
It was prior, Tallamore came after the comp plan.
After the comp plan, so it was guided, it was guided business park before Tallamore
Correct.
was in place. Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other questions for staff at this time?
No, you answered the two questions I had, which, which is really good. Thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The purpose of this rezoning is merely to market the property. There's no specific project that has been submitted to the city.
Correct.
Right? And nothing, we're not aware of any project, right?
No.
Okay. And I just wanted to make sure of that, just because, you know, we look at projects as a whole, and here our project is just a rezoning in the context of marketing a property. So on that note, I, I just wanted to mention that the A U A R, if there is a specific project in the future that may need to be updated depending on the scope of that project and, you know, whatever, you know, whatever that project is, so just, just pointing that out.
Right, right. The A U A R, anything that develops on there at that site will, unless it, unless they want to go through an EAW or another environmental review, will have to kind of fall within the anticipated development scenarios
Right.
by the A U A R.
Yeah, okay. That's it.
Anthony, one more question, just to confirm.
Yep.
There's homes to the, we've got homes to the, to the west abutting the property. There's no homes to the north abutting the property, right? Those homes that are in, those homes that are there are part of this, this land.
So there's, there's residential parcels on the east, and the applicant is under contract to acquire those as part of their site assembly. There's this farmstead to the north is not occupied. It's, it's not a residence at this time. It's actually part of the...
The mining?
Yeah, the Stone Exvestoria Mineral Extraction Operation there.
Okay, and then there's some homes to the east across the road.
Correct.
Okay.
I think two of them.
Okay.
Maybe one, I think.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Okay. This item is a public hearing item, so at this time we will open up the public hearing. Anyone that would like to speak on this item may do so at this time coming to the podium stating your name and address for the record.
Jim Bowen, 14253 Alliam Court, just to the, just to the west of this parcel. Just have to confess ignorance of what the, what the zoning for B2 includes, what type of businesses. It just says, I think it said they're employment district, so it could be any, any kind of employment, could be retail, industrial, warehouse, office space, what, what would it include?
Yeah, it used to be referred to as the business park. Anthony, can I have you answer that question?
Yeah, so it's, it's, the zoning code has a list of uses that are permitted either with standards or conditionally, and typically these are business park type uses such as warehouse, distribution, data centers are included in that. We also have other uses such as commercial bakeries, health and fitness facilities are a business park use. It's, it's typical or consistent with what you would see south of County Road 42 near Highway 3 along Business Parkway. That's the, that's what I would describe as far as development types.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd also note too, it's, it does preclude, like, industrial, heavy industrial uses.
It does preclude.
Yeah, doesn't, doesn't allow those.
My name's Al Bestor. We have the farm right there on 42. These data centers, I just want to bring it up. If it does turn into a data center, they use a lot of water. DNR is after all the farmers, varrier, gation. So what is going to happen in the future with them using all that water? Ground level goes down. Who's going to be the first to get blamed? The farmer. They're not going to get shut down. We are. So that's only concern that I have, because I am from Hampton. They're going to try to put one up down there. They're putting one in Farmington. They're putting one in Lakeville. And they told us they're going to put them all up. What's going to happen to our ground water? That's all I have to say.
Is there anyone?
I am Christopher Horton. My address is actually, I live at the church in the parsonage there in that excluded corner, 14385 Blaine Avenue. The only question, I guess, or comment I have is in regards to his clarification about the purposes for the, you mentioned that heavy industrial is not allowed, but distribution center sounds like it has trucks with backup beepers and a lot of them. So is that, is that allowed there then? Or is there any kind of sound requirement in the code?
Anyone else in the audience like to speak on this item this evening? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Keniger, seconded by Commissioner Ellis. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Public hearing is now closed. Anthony, a couple of questions, I think to follow up on, one, the sound from a distribution center?
Yeah, so Madam Chair, a distribution center is a, is a use that would be allowed in the Business Park zoning district. With regards to noise generated by trucks backing up, I would simply refer to the city's noise ordinance. A lot of times what we find is that when talking with users and there is some sort of component to their use that may create noise, they have ways of remedying that, either through, in the case of trucks backing up, different types of sound than a loud beep or disabling those beeps. But without an actual project before us and an applicant for such a use, we can't really speculate.
And I would assume, is, I mean, obviously, I would hope that their design would be mindful of, of the residents and, and the church in designing, you know, and not having the trucks backing up right by either one of those uses potentially.
Yeah, and those are discussions that we do have in preliminary meetings with, with developers when they come in.
So it's something that we can take into account when we get a project before us.
Yeah, and then with regards to the water usage, because a data center was a, and a scenario within the A U A R as a potential development scenario on that site, during that A U A R review process, the Metropolitan Council objected to the A U A R at the initial step due to the large amount of water usage. The A U A R was adopted, updated to specify a type of dry cooling for any sort of data center use that would use electricity and air conditioning systems to cool the servers. So it uses much less water, I think like 100,000 gallons a day on the high end, which is, sounds like a lot, but it's, it isn't really that significant for 200 and some acres of land. So the type of cooling proposed by the A U A R that staff would be anticipating to be, to come forward for any data center use would be a dry cooling versus a wet cooling.
And obviously, again, we don't have a project in front of us.
Correct.
But when we do, that will be a point of, of review and conversation at that point.
Yes.
And it's only the Met Council is already shutting stuff down that is high water usage
Correct.
as well. So, so Met Council's working on it too. They're shutting it down.
And, and again, Madam Chair, to my comment on the A U A R, if it is a project that's beyond the scope of what was contemplated or allowed within that A U A R, then that environmental review would have to
Oh, yeah, certainly.
be updated.
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for staff? With that, we can move forward with the motion.
I move we recommend the City Council adopt an ordinance amending City of Rosemount zoning map for the subject property from AG agriculture to B2 employment.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Ellis, seconded by Commissioner Boogai. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. This item will go forward to City Council on September 17th. And our last public hearing item this evening, a request by Independent School District 196 for approval of a rezoning conditional use permit, preliminary and final plat, site plan, building design review, and a zoning ordinance text amendment to allow a school with various sports fields and play areas to be built on site. Julia, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. So a little bit of a summary of the requests. So the applicant is requesting the following approvals to construct a new, new school on a 75.6 acre site south of 150th Street West or County Road 42 and east of Biscayne Avenue. The following requests are being, requested is rezoning of the site from A2 agricultural to R3 medium-density residential, preliminary and final plats, text amendment to the zoning ordinance modifying section 11101 general definitions to modify the elementary school definition to include grades kindergarten through eighth grade, site plan and building design review, and then a conditional use permit. So a little overview of the site location, so you can see it's outlined in red. It's going to be located east of Biscayne Avenue and south of County Road 42. Currently, the land is owned by the University of Minnesota, but Independent School District 196 is acquiring this land for the proposed Rosemount Middle School. So an overview of the rezoning, so the applicant is requesting the site to be rezoned to R3 medium-density residential. The future land use designation for the area is a mixture of LDR, low-density residential, and MDR, medium-density residential, which you can see, it's outlined on this right-hand side, so you can kind of see that mixture. But due to the area having a larger MDR designation, staff did recommend the applicant request to rezone the site to R3. So you can see on the lower left-hand side, the current zoning is R2 agricultural, and that future land use designation is that mixture of LDR and MDR, so the applicant is requesting that R3 medium-density residential rezoning. Overview of the preliminary and final plats, so the applicant is requesting preliminary and final plats for Rosemount School District 5th Edition. The proposed plat shows the total area of the site containing 75.574 acres of land south of County Road 42 and east of Biscayne Avenue. The plat shows that there are two buildable lots as well as two outlots and dedicated roadway. Lot one is where the main school district is, where the main school site will be shown, which is that 59.7 acres of land. And then lot two, which is on the south side, which is adjacent to the proposed Boulder Trail extension, that will be planned for a future city lift station. Then Outlet A will be 5.1 acres in size and will contain various easement areas, which is going to be, you can see that outlined in the northwest portion of the site adjacent to County Road 42. And then Outlet B will consist of 2.6 acres of land and is, and as well as dedicated right-of-way for future extension of Boulder Trail, which you can see on the southeast portion of the site, adjacent to the proposed Boulder extension off of Biscayne Avenue. And then a little overview of the text amendment request, so in June 2024, the updated zoning code and map proposal went before council for their approval for adoption. Many changes were made with the zoning code update, which included changes and additions to the definitions chapter. In the existing definitions for elementary schools and secondary schools, there are no specific grades identified in either one. In the previous zoning code, elementary schools, middle schools, and secondary schools were all identified as uses. And the newly updated code allows for elementary schools to be a conditional use within the residential zoning districts and a permitted use within the public and institutional zoning district, zoning district. But due to there no longer being a definition for middle schools within the zoning code, it was staff and the city consultant's team recommendation that the elementary school definition be altered to include specific primary education grades. So you can see in the left-hand corner, the existing definition, which explains a building used for purposes of public or private elementary education, including special needs education, which means all requirements of education laws of the state of Minnesota and not providing residential accommodations. With that proposed definition, we would be adding grades kindergarten through eighth grade into that section within the elementary school portion to allow for this use on this site. A little overview of the site plan, so the site will contain a main school building with two parking lot areas and a service lot area. So you can see the school is positioned in the central western part of the site with the bus lot and secondary lot being south and also south and also east of the main building, and then the main parking lot area being northwest of the school site, with the service lot being adjacently west from the main building. The school site also is shown to have baseball fields, practice fields, softball fields, and tennis courts. So you can see on the site plan, the baseball fields and practice field, as well as softball field is going to be located east and north of the main building, with the tennis courts being located southwest of the main building. And then also there are ponding and infiltration areas on site that are shown to be located directly south and east of the bus lot area, also adjacent to the Boulder Trail extension as well. The proposed building will have the capacity to hold 1,350 students with plans for 57 homeroom classrooms. The plans submitted for the school buildings show a combination of classrooms, common space, gymnasiums, pool, performance stage, media center, cafeteria, and then also administration areas and offices. Since elementary schools are conditional use within the R3 medium density residential zoning district and are subject to the minimum lot requirement setbacks in site and building standards of the PI Public Institutional Zoning District. So overview of the access and parking on site, so the site is shown to be accessed by a road off of Boulder Trail. The main access road extends north, which you can see that main access is off that extension of Boulder Trail, and extends north, and then it does split off with one section of the road going east towards the bus lot, and the remainder, the other section of the road flows west and then north to the main lot, where the main access into the building will be from that north portion on the main building. The road section that extends west on the western side then loops around as well, so that traffic flow will go back down south to the main access off the proposed Boulder Trail. And then also the proposed middle school site has shown networks of sidewalks and trails providing access internally and around the site. So you can see there is a sidewalk proposed along the northern portion of the site adjacent to County Road 42, which will give access from the main parking lot to the baseball and practice fields, and then also will run along the main building down to the secondary lot, and then also gives access to the tennis courts, and then also other open areas in the eastern side of the site. Then also a breakdown of the parking stall requirements, so required for the site are 74 parking stalls, which is one stall for each classroom plus one additional space for each 50 student capacity, and provided is 205 parking stalls plus 35 stalls in the bus lot area as well. Also a little overview of the traffic study, so staff did receive a traffic study for the applicant in July, which included existing conditions on site, traffic forecast, traffic analysis, and conclusions and recommendations. The study examined the weekday AM and PM peak hour, traffic impacts of the proposed project, and multiple intersections that would be impacted by the school site. The study also included a review of the pedestrian and bicycle connection impacts related to the proposed project. So you can see in this table below on this slide, kind of the breakdown in peak hours in and out in total for drop-off and pickup, and then also that peak hour in PM from 3 to 4, and then weekday daily totals as well. Air improvements were identified, which included installing traffic signal controls at County Road 42 and Biscayne Avenue, providing separate left turn through and right turn lanes on the westbound approach for Biscayne Avenue and Boulder Trail, providing dedicated eastbound left turn lane and dedicated westbound right turn lanes on Boulder Trail, and providing two exiting lanes with one left turn and one right turn lane. City staff did include a condition in the recommended action for the school district to continue working with the city and Dakota County on pedestrian safety and traffic-related concerns, and that solutions which are found to be warranted will need to be in place prior to the school opening. A little overview of the landscaping and park dedication, so the landscape plan that was provided contains a total of 449 trees throughout the site, so you can see a lot of that tree coverage is on the surrounding, outside surrounding areas of the site, a lot of that buffering area west of the practice fields and north of the practice fields, and then also around the filtration area as well. The newly updated city code now requires mixed use and non-residential uses to provide a minimum of one overstoryed tree per 3,000 square feet of land area. The main school site is 2,599,223 square feet in size, which means the total of 866 trees are required, be provided on site. Within our old zoning code, we did not have a landscape requirement for the PI Public Institutional Zoning District, so this is a newly found addition to the updated zoning code. But the landscape plan does show a deficit of 417 trees, and staff is recommending a condition of approval that the applicant work with staff to address that landscape plan. Staff did touch base with the applicant, and they are aware of this deficit. And then also the City of Rosemount Parks and Recreation Department reviewed the submitted development plans, and are recommending that the school district add a trail along the east side of Biscayne Avenue from the Biscayne Avenue and 150 Street West, County Road 42 intersection to the district's southwest property corner. They are also recommending that the park dedication not be collected due to the public recreation spaces that are provided on site. Then the applicant did submit a photometric study, which meets all the, the standards set by the city code. The proposed lights fixtures to be used are shielded and will direct light towards the ground and not towards adjacent properties. The plan does show that there will be 25 light poles around the site, with a majority of them being located around the school and parking lot area, and then also 34 lights that will be mounted to the school itself. Then a overview of the architectural elevations, so like I had mentioned previously, these, this site is required to follow the public institutional standards, so with that, the public institutional building materials standards require the building to be at least 50% brick or natural stone. The remaining 50% of the wall may be specifically colored concrete block tile, architectural texture, concrete cast in place or better. The building elevations plans that were submitted do show the exterior of the building to be a mixture of brick, precast wall panels, and metal panels. The proposed building is also shown to be under the maximum height requirement for the PI zoning district. And then here's a floor plan showing the 47 homerooms and then additional amenities within the site, which, like I had mentioned, a gymnasium, pool, media center, cafeteria, and a performance area. And then also, these next few slides will show 3D renderings that were submitted by the applicant, kind of panning around the site as a whole, showing the secondary lot with the bus lot looking north on the site. And then also the conditional use permit, so CUP is required for elementary schools within the R3 low density residential zoning district. The city may approve a CUP upon finding that the use at the proposed location meets the eight standards, which staff did find that the proposed school did meet the eight required standards for conditional use permit. And then there's five recommended motions in front of the commission today, first one being to recommend the city council approve a zoning map amendment to rezone the site from A2 to R3. Motion to recommend the city council approve a preliminary and final plat for Rosemount School District 5th Edition, subject to all conditions, approved as part of the city's site and building design review for the project. Three, motion to recommend the city approve the text amendment to the zoning ordinance modifying section 11101 general definitions to modify the school, our elementary school definition to include grades kindergarten through eighth grade. Motion four, to approve the site plan and building design to allow Independent School District 196 to construct a school at Rosemount School District 5th Edition, subject to conditions 1 through 7. And then the final motion to recommend the city council approve a conditional use permit for a school to be located on the Rosemount School 5th, District 5th Edition, subject to all conditions, approved as part of the city's building site and building design review for the project. At this time, I can take any questions, but there are representatives with the school district, Dakota County, the architectural firm, engineering firm, and I do believe the University of Minnesota as well.
Thank you, Julia. Lots of information.
Yes.
Great job. Thank you for all that.
Yes.
I will start with just, I know there's a couple of things that, that are of lots of interest, and one is traffic.
Mm-hmm.
And safety. And of course, I know the school district is very concerned about safety as well. Can you, can you step me through on a map? You would, there's lots of discussion on the traffic lanes that were recommended at Boulder and Biscayne and stuff, can you just talk through those maybe? On where, like, you said that there were some right turn dedicated, left turn dedicated, like where, what are we talking about here?
We do have our public works and engineering director, Nick Eggers, here as well.
Okay.
To speak on some of the transportation and traffic concerns as well.
Would you like him to, well, step me through that?
Well, I guess, no, I can speak to some of that, but the main access to the site will be off Boulder Trail. I know you're having, your questions are more based on right in, right out, or those...
Well, so like, so in the, and I can't get my, my machine here to scroll very well, so I can't get to the page very well, but anyways, in, in the write-up from the recommendation of the traffic study.
Mm-hmm.
There was a lot of text where they said, we recommend, you know, there'd be a, a through here from eastbound, westbound, like, it was just, it got very confusing to me, so I was hopeful on a map that you could say, if you're leaving the school and you're on Boulder, there's going to be right turn through and left turn dedicated lanes on, from Boulder to Biscayne, like, if we could just talk through that, how that flow is going to work?
I think I might defer to Nick on this.
I'll say a few things, then I'm gonna, I'm gonna also take an opportunity to defer to experts that are in the audience who wrote that report and who developed the plans. So just in a general sense, where, where the recommendations come from is largely based on percentages of movements of where trips are coming and going from. So an analysis is done based on the service area of the school and where they are projecting arrivals and departures to go when they're leaving the site. So from that, then professional judgments used to set up how many lanes are appropriate to handle those movements and which directions they are set up for, and that's what happened with, with the recommendations for the Boulder and Biscayne intersection, as well as Biscayne and, and 145th slash County Road 42. So I'll just leave it there, but I know Ed Terhar from Stan Tech is in the audience, and he's the author of the traffic report, but I would recommend that we hear a little bit more from him on, on that if you're.
Okay.
If you would like to.
Okay, that sounds good. This might be for, for him or for the county, I know that we've had lots of conversation about the light at 42 and Biscayne. This is going to amplify it even more. We've, we've had more development going in now in that area as well. Is, I know there was a condition that, that the safety and traffic stuff be addressed before the school opens, does that include the light being up? There was a recommendation from the traffic study that, that a light be put there, is that going to be up before the school opens?
Short answer is yes on that. It's, the, the installation of the signal's not really under the control of the school and their project management.
Right.
I'll just make that clear, but in working with both the school district and Dakota County traffic staff, we're, the culmination of the traffic study and subsequent or complementary work that county staff had done to analyze things that are happening at that intersection even without the inclusion of the school, but then factoring that in led to the conclusion that a signal was warranted for that, along with some geometric reconfigurations there. So it's a little bit more than just plunking in a signal. There will be some, some changes coming there as to the alignment to, to make it more optimal. That part, that design work has to be done. There may be some right-of-way acquisitions on the north or northwesterly side to make the right space for these things to happen. And that all lines up for a project to be programmed in the county's capital improvements plan in the next couple of years with the objective of having that signal activated before the school is open.
Okay, so that would be part of the ensuring that those safety and traffic things are in place before the school opens?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, everybody's on the same page with that being the goal, and there appears to be adequate time to do that.
Okay. The other thing, Julian, I don't know, so we're rezoning this to medium density residential.
Mm-hmm.
But then you made some comments about, about what's allowed in public institutional, but we're not zoning it to public institutional, so does that fall under the public institutional zoning requirements or the, or medium density?
So it falls under the medium density, but due to schools being a permitted use within the public and institutional zoning district, it follows those standards.
Okay.
Because this is a conditional use within the residential zoning districts, and it's kind of separate in its own.
Okay.
It follows those standards, which is similar to how we did it with their old zoning code.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, and so what you're saying is, in the previous code, we didn't have a requirement for trees in that public institutional, we do now.
Correct, yes.
And hence, they have a large deficit.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I was very concerned, and I was not happy with the large deficit, similar to Commissioner Whitman's comments on an earlier item this evening, where we've got something in front of us and it's, it's drastically lower, like, you know, and, and I don't, to be honest, I don't think they're going to be able to get all those trees on that site. I don't know if we're potentially looking at doing cash and lue of or doing, like, what, what we're going to work out, but, but to see something, you know, I, I get having it done before city council, but I also feel like that's part of our thing here, and if they were short, you know, a small number would be one thing, but we're short almost 50% of them, so that, that was a concern for me. It does help to know that we didn't have it before, so they have been working on these plans, and they didn't have that in their purview possibly before. It's been a few months now that we've had that code, but I know it's rather new, so...
Yeah, like, for instance, with the, the elementary school that went before the commission earlier this year, there was no standard for landscaping with that, so
Right.
In that, again, we are still catching things within our updated zoning code, and that was one thing that was...
Do you have a sense on how many trees you think they're going to be able to get on?
I mean, there are site constraints.
Right.
You can kind of see from the lands...
Between the middle of a ball field.
Yes, so there is that large easement area with that Outlot A in the northwest corner, which there's utility lines that go through there, so trees would not be allowed to be planted there. I know there's issues, obviously, there can't be trees planted on practice fields or the baseball fields or that. So there are some site constraints with getting that many trees at least on site.
Madam Chair, as a part of the, the discussion for the planning commission tonight too, I know because there are a number of, number of representatives here, I'm sure they'll be also able and willing to talk to on a number of these, these topics.
Okay.
And, you know, one of the underlying things that, that staff has reviewed as a part of this in conjunction with the district and Dakota County is, you don't build middle schools very often. I mean, they, they, they're the experts in this, and they can speak to it, so there are a lot of unique things as a part of any design that would come forward of a, a school of, of this size within our community. So I'll certainly let them speak to some of that, that nature of it, and...
Yeah, it would just, I would feel better knowing, like, okay, the code says 866 are required, and we're going to be able to get 600 on or 550, so we're, we're going to say, okay, we're going to be short, and, and we recognize why because of the circumstances and given how the code calculates the trees, and given it doesn't take into account football fields and baseball fields and, and soccer fields and such, but, but we don't have that, like, we're kind of, so I don't know how many trees were foregoing, so that's kind of...
I would certainly defer to the applicant on that one.
Okay. Thank you. I think I've got most of my questions for now addressed. Any other questions from the commission?
My questions for the trees too.
Okay. Commissioner Whitman?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. Kind of question, my, my actual main thing that jumped out at me was kind of a technical issue, it's the text amendment, and looping in middle schools to the definition of elementary school, which bangs against my mind, because I was a middle school teacher before, before my current life as a lawyer. I don't believe a middle school is an elementary school, and I do have some ideas of how to do a different text amendment that I think would still accomplish our goals. I get why I think we did this, because it's simple, it's a, it's a, it's kind of the path of least resistance, and it gets it through. I just don't believe it's legally and practically the right way to do it. So maybe we can discuss that more with the, in the planning commission discussion, or I can lay out kind of what I have in mind.
I can just lay out what you have in mind.
Okay. Okay, well, I looked up the Minnesota Education Code, and there's actually separate definitions for elementary, middle, and secondary schools. This is in Minnesota statutes 128.05. An elementary school is defined as having pupils in pre-kindergarten through grade six. A middle school is two consecutive grades in grades four through 10, okay? Two consecutive grades, somewhere in there. Of course, Rosemount, our middle schools are six through eight. And a secondary school has pupils in grades seven through 12, okay? Somewhere in there. Somewhere in there, depending on how the district's laid out. So, a middle school is a special kind of school that's in between an elementary and a secondary. It's a blend of both. It fits kind of that definition of secondary, it fits that definition of elementary, and that's why it needs its own separate definition of middle school, and in my opinion, why the state law defines it separately. So I looked at our zoning code and I see that the definition of elementary school and secondary school is the exact same definition, which I think is, is a problem. They're both, they both state a building used for the purpose of public or private elementary education, including, I'm sorry, elementary education including a special needs ed, which meets all the requirements of education laws of the state. The only difference is that secondary school says, used for the purpose of private secondary education, right? I like the idea of providing grades, uh, grade levels, but why don't we just adapt it to our actual Rosemount schools? And so, our elementary school can say K through, pre-kindergarten through five, or whatever it is. Our middle school can say six through eight, and our secondary school can say nine through 12. And I looked at what, well, what kind of changes would that require in our zoning code? And I only found four. I know this, what you've presented here, there's one, you know, one's easier than four. But I think four is pretty simple too, and I think it's the right way of doing it. And I have those and I could go through those specifically, or I could, we could talk about those later. But it's really, it's just, the definition of educational services needs an added middle. We need to add a definition of middle school with those grade levels. We need to put the grade levels for secondary and elementary. We need to add middle school as a conditional use in Chapter 3. And we need the Chapter 7 development procedures to have the same development procedures as elementary schools. So, I, technical, probably from, probably from my bias from having been a middle school teacher and knowing what middle schools actually are, I, I just can't, I just can't support the idea of an elementary school being a middle school. And I, and I think it deserves special recognition for what it, what it really is. So, that's, that's my, my comment.
Okay. Any, Adam or Julia, anything you want to comment on that now or wait till later?
Well, I would caution against using the school district's grade levels as defining what a school is. I'd also, that, that certainly can change. I know my school was a sixth grade, K through six, and then it became K through five, and now it's K through four. I, I would say that schools are something that come around once every, you know, 50 years. We didn't, when's the last middle school that we built? And then, certainly an elementary school and a middle school are vastly different inside the walls. But from a land use and zoning standpoint, they're much more similar than a, than a high school would be. And I don't necessarily think that it makes much of a difference from an approval standpoint, whether it's defined as a middle school or an elementary school.
I, I would suggest, on your point, let's use the state law definitions of elementary, middle, and secondary. And then that provides us that flexibility if the district ever does change their grade levels, which I don't anticipate they will do anytime soon. But we can do the state law definitions. That provides the flexibility, that aligns with our state laws. We're talking about our local laws here, so we're talking about consistency with our laws.
So, Madam Chair, maybe as a point of order, to move that discussion forward, if there is an appetite by the majority of the commission to reframe or take a, a new look at that, that text amendment, that is certainly something that you could do. If you would like to move ahead with it as written, that is also something you can do. Just laying out the options that are in front of the, the commission this evening.
Does that text amendment need to occur in order for this item to move forward? Or can that text amendment be cleaned up?
It would be a separate, new public hearing, because you're now advertising and changing a different set of text within the zoning code. So there'd be some time that would come as a part of that. I guess I'd have to look and then think through the other subsequent motions as a part of it. It's, is it? And, and this was also done in consultation with the city's consultants, who have worked on school definitions across many other municipalities. So we do want to rely on their expertise. Commissioner Whitman, certainly appreciate your perspective. I think there's a lot of good information in there. I don't know how the, the commission wants to approach that from a timeliness perspective based on the information before us this evening.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would, I would just caution on taking the easy route. My route that I suggested is also easy. I'd caution on taking the easy route just for the sake of taking the easy route. I think we have to do what's right, thinking about the consistency of our laws, what's clear. An elementary school is not a middle school, and we shouldn't start. It'd be the same thing like if a goat farm is allowed, and we define goat farm to include middle schools. Now we can approve it, you know? It's the same logic there. We're just putting it in that definition just so we can move forward with an approval. And I, yeah, it, it, it's not good practice.
And I, I guess, I, I don't see a problem with it, because I see so much from the, the land use and the zoning between a elementary school and middle school. You have about the same parking situation, you have the same bus situation. Really, it's, it's the same functionality. And, and so I, I feel like it's going through so many extra steps for what the intent of what we're trying to get to here.
Well, how about we change the definition then, well, but we're going to have to change it. We could do something like school, elementary, and middle, you know? I mean, the, I, I agree that elementary and middle are more, are more closely related land-use-wise than middle and secondary, because of the parking. You don't have students driving to school, right? But it's just not good practice. I know our consultant suggested this quick way of doing it, but I disagree with it. I don't think it's right, and I'm not going to approve this text amendment. And I do think that this text amendment is necessary to move to the next levels as well. And I want to approve this project.
Okay, well, how about for, for now, I think we've, we've heard the, the thoughts, and let's go ahead and open the public hearing, unless there's other questions from the commission first. We'll check that, but then we'll open the public hearing, and then we can hear on the other items and then come back to a final decision on how we want to move forward. So it's all good? Are there any other questions for commission before I open the public hearing?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay, thank you. The item is a public hearing item, so at this time I will open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item may do so at this time. Coming to the podium, stating your name and address for the record. We did have Nick help me on the traffic study. The person in the audience that's going to help answer the traffic study question?
Oh.
That you're calling on?
Ed Terhar from Stantec is the person who wrote the report, but we have many representatives of the project here that may wish to comment on that at, at your discretion.
Yes, so if anyone would like to come up, I know we've got some questions on the traffic pieces and the landscape deficit, if anyone wants to address those.
Good evening, members of the commission. Scott McQueen, Old Architects, 332 Minnesota Street, St. Paul, Minnesota. We gave you a big pack of tonight and great job, Julia walking through it. Your first question, I think, was on the tree ordinance. I've got to say, we just kind of worked through that last week. And we endeavor to have everything in our exhibits before you, and so I apologize. From the time we learned that last week to today, it wasn't time to even
Absolutely.
comprehend 400 more trees. And it being a new ordinance, we were just before you on the elementary school where we didn't have that topic. So, we're flat-footed on that topic.
Okay.
As to the question of can we accomplish 400 more trees, we are going to meet on that and figure out how we can do that, because it is advantage to the taxpayer to try to plant trees from a, as opposed to your remedy, which is $350 for every tree we can't plant. So I think that's why staff said, let's try to work that out between now and council. I anticipate we probably won't get all 400 on there without sacrificing fields. And so there'll probably be a remedy for the deficit. But we'll endeavor to put more trees on that site.
Okay.
We've already got a large number of trees on that site to respect the U of M design guidelines for buffers with adjacent parcels. So that's why you see some heavy plantings around the majority of the perimeter of that site. So we'll continue to work on that topic, it just is a very new topic.
Okay, thank you.
And we do have representatives on the traffic study, if you want to hear about turn lanes and those kind of things.
Yeah, I want to hear a little bit more on the movement, you know,
Sure.
when you exit at Biscayne and when you come from.
Yep, I think you'll get as much as you.
I'll get as much as I want, right?
Thank you.
Yes, good evening. My name is Ed Terhar, traffic engineer with Stantec. We're located at 1 Carlson Parkway in Plymouth, Minnesota. I don't have a map in front of me here, but your question had to do with the recommendations in the study for turn lanes.
Yeah, Julia, can you pull a map up that shows?
Might be able to tab back on the keyboard there to a couple of slides. He can get an overview of the, the general area.
That works, yeah.
Is that close enough?
That works, yeah.
Okay, so, as Director Egger described, we, you know, we took a look at the, the site and the location and existing roadways, and then added the school traffic on top of that. So really, the study just looked at the school, not any other development in the future, but just the school development. So based on the school trips and the trip generation that was shown, we're recommending at Boulder Trail. Obviously, Boulder Trail will need to be extended from, you know, east from Biscayne. As it approaches the school access, we're recommending that you have a left-turn lane on Boulder Trail into the site. Yep, into the site. And then, as is shown on here, but it was a recommendation and confirmed with our study, we want to have two exiting lanes coming out of the school, so a left and a right. Even though the, the, you know, the left initially won't go anywhere, because it's not going to be extended until other development happens farther down the road, and that is extended further east. But as it's constructed, we did recommend a left and a right. As you approach, as Boulder Trail approaches Biscayne, in the short term, or with the school, we're recommending two approach lanes there. There would be a left-through combined and then a right-turn, because the primary, the pri, you know, the large majority of trips from the school are going to take a right and go up to County Road 42. If there are some that go the other direction, one lane will be able to accommodate that in the short term. Now, when other development happens, depending on what it is, that intersection may need to be expanded, and we recommended making sure there's enough right-of-way in that corridor to accommodate ultimately three lanes, a left, a through, and a right.
And will that intersection be stop signs?
Initially, it will be just stop sign.
Four-way stops?
Uh, no, it'll just be stop sign on the east, the eastbound and the westbound approaches.
On Boulder?
On Boulder, yes. On Biscayne, right now, there already is a center left-turn lane. It was reconstructed to the south to match the, the section on the north, so there's a center left-turn lane. That will accommodate the left turns onto Boulder. And then if there's any traffic coming from the south, they'll be able to make a right turn out of that through movement in the, because there's very little traffic coming from the south for the school.
Okay, so if you're, so if you're going south on Biscayne, there, there's a center lane now to turn left?
Into, yes, even though it doesn't go anywhere.
Onto Boulder, even though it doesn't go anywhere?
Yes, yep.
And then the, if people are turning right, it would be the same through right lane? There's not a separate right turn?
No, there is not.
Okay.
Yep. And then, as was discussed already, we did recommend traffic signal control at 42 and Biscayne. And the county has actually looked at that in more greater detail. They've identified some additional geometric improvements that are needed, including some changes to the actual alignment of the intersections. That's going to be a, a bigger detail, and those are some of the things that were discussed that will happen, you know, by the, before the school opens.
And so, if you, as you're approaching at Biscayne, you're approaching 42s, you're coming, you're headed north on Biscayne, there will be, will that have right turn through and left turn lanes at that light?
I believe it will. I think those details are still in, in process as far as that actual layout. We haven't seen an actual layout, but I think that has been the discussion. Right now, it's just a left and a through right.
Right.
But ideally, there, you know, once this intersection is being reconstructed, it would be, would likely, would be expanded to that.
Okay, and would the, I don't know if you would happen to know, but if you were headed south on Biscayne and came to this intersection, will that also have a left?
It'll like, I would think it would likely match.
It would match, okay.
Yes, if the, if the intersection is being completely reconstructed, it would likely match.
Biscayne is wide there coming from the.
It is, but I think they're also worried about the skew of the intersection, so there's going to be some actual realignment of things happening that are a bigger picture than, than we know right now.
We had a lot that's not developed there, you know? So there's a lot there that's not developed yet.
Oh, yes, yes, there is, you're, you're right.
If you were coming from 160th on Biscayne, when you get to Boulder Trail, will there be a separate right turn lane? So people are coming 160th to the school, will there be a through and a right turn?
As you're coming northbound at Boulder?
So you're headed northbound, you're headed on Biscayne, you're driving north?
Yep.
And you're approaching Boulder?
Sure, initially, there was not a need for a right turn lane. There's very little school traffic coming from the south.
Okay.
But as I said, as this area continues to develop, that may need to be added in the future. And there is, you know, there is, is right-of-way, or right-of-way could be dedicated for that.
Okay. Does anybody else have any traffic questions for?
No.
I actually have one more.
Sure.
That you just said as you started, because I had asked, I thought I'd asked this question to staff, but maybe I didn't. The traffic study you did was only taking into account existing, existing built stuff here plus the school. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
So it wasn't taking into account the fact that, like, all the new homes that are going in, they have new apartment buildings that are being built, the new commercial that's going up?
Well, it, it didn't take in those into account specifically, but we did add a background growth factor to the traffic forecast, which is a way to account for that development without knowing specifically where it is.
Okay.
So, that was accounted for, and, you know, as anything big comes in, you're going to require another traffic study. So it's going to be, you know, it's going to be looked at again.
Right, okay, so it, it's just important, I think, to note that your traffic study suggested these without that exact development of stuff we already have going on, which I think amplifies, for me, it amplifies the need to get, to get this done, because we do have a lot other development that is, even if your growth, you took a growth factor in, I don't know if it was, I don't, I don't know what percent it was, but if that, you know, there is more, this is certainly going to cause more need to action.
Certainly, sure.
And if I could, Madam Chair, I'll just add that this is what I was alluding to with the, the county's additional work that they had done that complements this study, is that they also have background traffic data. They took their own volume measurements in and threw the County Road 42 corridor in this part of town earlier this summer. And they also had a corridor study that was completed in late 2022 or early 23, I lose track of that, which looked at future scenarios and growth projections. So, it's, the, the types of things that are about to come to fruition here with, with changes and controls and so forth were preconceived from some of that earlier and, and, and work that has been done lately. So, I, I just want to, to make it clear that, you know, the school's a part of that overall bigger picture, and this study that they've done fits together with the previous work.
I just, I just want to make sure we get that all done in accordance and ready for the school to open and, and all that. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Did any, no one else have questions for?
No.
No, I did have to.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience wanting to speak on this item this evening? You, come to the, you've got to come to the podium.
Elise Mademan again. Just being a parent of three kids, you know, elementary, middle school, and high school, is buses are going to be using the same entrance at the same time the parents are dropping off or picking up our kids. So is, that seems a little kind of backwards from what we're trying to get away from on some of these, like, separate parking lots, which, great, 100% agree with that. So that's my question, are these buses coming in at the same time parents are going to be dropping off their kids? And then vice versa? versa, too, if there's an option to look at that? Would be appreciated by parents. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I had a question as well about just traffic flow, and it looks like there's a, a third lot that we didn't talk about necessarily right at, for lack of a better term,
The service lot?
Exactly, the service lot here.
Call it the service lot.
And just what that is, I can't read that, it's a service lot, you've got better eyes than I have. So just, again, talking about that traffic flow and that that's not anticipated to be an access route, for, for lack of a better term, for parent drop-off or anything. The parents are gonna be looping down to the southwest corner and around. If somebody could confirm that that's how that would work, that would be helpful for me.
Yeah, please.
Scott McQueen, World Architects, again. I appreciate your questions on the site flow. This site design has not only gone through a study with the traffic analysis, but it's a, a direct inspiration and kind of replication of what the district has been able to successfully implement at the last two middle scho, or the last two elementary schools. So this follows the real similar pattern to the approval you guys looked at for the elementary number 20. And we've had East Lake Elementary in operation now for a number of years with this same significant onsite infrastructure. It's really, we're, we're bringing all the, kind of the real active drop-off pickup action onto the school site versus relying on city infrastructure. So that's why you see a very significant road to allow for plenty of onsite stacking. So we, and that onsite stacking is gonna happen really on that west side. So that, and that begins before buses, and there's buses still coming in and out. So the buses get the shorter run to get in and get out while that stack builds up towards the west side in the AM. In the PM, the stack starts 45 minutes before release, and there's a long tail for that to chill out and, and exist there while buses arrive in concert. At PM, they all come together and get at that bus crowd, and then they all leave together. So it's inspired by that movement. It's one of the most successful sites the school district owns is East Lake in terms of its movements, and it's just scaled up to be a middle, middle school scale. There is a third area that you identified, which is the, basically the loading dock area and a, and a few spaces for kitchen and custodial staff will be there. But mostly, that's for deliveries, and deliveries are primarily scheduled off, off peak of those two active times of the school day. So we see that as successfully working in between all that because it shouldn't be that active at the same time as our two peaks.
And so the buses, the buses and the parents dropping off share a very small length of, of road together, and then they split.
Yes, and that's intentional to not have parents taking, let's say, that bus world.
Right, right.
So it's, it's a little reminder, everybody get going that way, and then the buses actually get in there. We do not expect the stack in the morning to be that far back.
To be that far back, yeah.
There'll be a lot of car movement up the hill, so to speak.
And if I, if I understood correctly, I did ask a question to staff earlier because I had wondered if, if there was a way to bring the buses in so that they didn't have to drive down that aisle and make the loop back to park in their, in their spaces. But my understanding is the topography and that infiltration pond that we have there just south of that parking lot doesn't allow for you to put another access in.
Yeah, we're, we're
Yeah.
40 feet, I think?
Yeah, that's what
35, something like that.
That's what Anthony was saying, is that the topography just is
And frankly, separate entrances cause problems because parents think those are nice entrances for them. And so we have as much disruption of the, the, kind of the bus world that way.
Yeah, okay. Does that answer?
Yep, that was, thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this item this evening? Seeing that, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Keniger, seconded by Commissioner Ellis. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. So we now have five motions before us.
Madam Chair, before the planning commission moves on any of the, the recommendations here, just pulling us back to the discussion on the zoning code text amendment per Commissioner Whitman's suggestion and recommendations. I was looking at our timing of our meetings and one option, I, I think, can't speak for everybody, but the agreement is to try to bundle these together in the most efficient manner to get them to City Council for a recommendation of approval for this, this project. I think that I hear support for the project from the commission. One way that we could accommodate it, if there is some disagreement or a suggestion for a new way to look at the text amendment, would be to amend that motion to, and I would let you author it, but, you know, some, some version of to accommodate a text amendment including a state definition of middle school at a public hearing at the City Council. So the same meeting that these other subsequent actions would be recommended for approval. So we're not inserting a delayed timeframe in there. We should have time to advertise that. That way, we're still meeting the requirements. We're holding, we held, holding the public hearing for the zoning code text amendment this evening, but we would also still then be able to forward that to City Council. Could be a second public hearing. We can consult with our attorney on that if we need to as, as well, if there's appetite for that for the, from the majority of the planning commission. I can rephrase that. I kind of
Well, well, no.
spit out a lot of stuff right there.
Well, certainly
Trying to accommodate what we're trying to
Certainly, I'd support that. I, yeah, I do not, I want to approve this project, and I don't want to hold up the project and delay the project. And so, and I was kind of thinking the same kind of thing of let's move this forward, but if there is a second public hearing required, that can happen in front of City Council, but of course, the city attorney can provide an opinion on that. And, yeah, I was just thinking again, too, of the referendum that allowed for this middle school to be built, specifically states separate. It's a state's elementary school and middle school, you know, it's separate things. And so I just think it's, it's right to align all of that to make sure that we have a separate definition of middle school within our code and in the context of this project.
I think that, I think that's a, a good option. Adam, I like your suggestion of being able to move it forward. I do, I personally feel like also that the elementary, middle schools are very similar in their zoning pieces, but I do appreciate and understand that while, while that works for now and for this project before us, it's not probably the, the optimal and proper way to clean up our, our text amendment, or our text definitions and our zoning ordinances. So I can, I see both sides of it, and I think if there's a way for us to clean it up that works without slowing this down, to do it properly, I think that is a fine solution.
I'll, I'll still stand by my comment. I don't think it's improper at this time. I'd, I'd like to still carry it forward, so.
I agree with Commissioner, I don't, to Anthony's point, it's, you know, I understand your comment about, you know, the kind of being facetious about we couldn't call it a goat pharma school, but that's not what we're doing. I mean, it's, it's a school, and we're saying you have two kinds of schools. You have elementary schools, and you have secondary schools, and you have post-secondary schools, and a third.
Don't forget the middle schools, people. That's all I'm saying.
I'm not forgetting anybody. You have those two, and that, I'm fine with it as, as presented, but, you know, we can, if we don't have a majority for that, then like you say,
Yeah.
we can, we can move it to the City Council, and they can, they can discuss whether there's a separate middle school idea.
Okay, so with that, and, and I personally, just for the record, I am, I am interested in the tree, the tree outcome and the landscaping outcome, but I do trust that, I understand now why we were presented with something that was so short. And so I do feel that getting that figured out before City Council is appropriate at this point, given that, that those were new with the zoo zoning ordinance, that that's where that came into play. So I don't have a problem moving that forward. And so with that, um, do we want to start?
Are we ready to make motions? I, are we talking about things more?
I'm ready to make motions.
I'll, I'll make the motions, and then I can make sure that the, the text amendment one, or we can split them up, or however.
We probably will split them up anyway.
Yeah, we probably
Yeah, we need to do them all individually, yeah. We do need to do all five individually. You want to start with the first one, somebody?
Sure, first one. I'll move to recommend the City Council approve a zoning map amendment to rezone the site from AG Agricultural to R3 Medium Density Residential.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Bugai, seconded by Commissioner Ellis. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll just keep rolling through these.
Yep.
Okay. Second, motion to recommend the City Council approve the preliminary and final plats for Rosemount School District 5th Edition, subject to all conditions approved as part of the city's site and building design review for the project.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Bugai, seconded by Commissioner Whitman. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
So I'll do this one here. Motion to recommend that the city approve a text amendment to the zoning ordinance that includes a separate definition of middle school to allow, allow for this use. Is that good?
Yeah, I think we'll accommodate that.
Yeah.
Second, I will second that. It's been moved by Commissioner Whitman, seconded by Commissioner Keniger. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve the site plan and building design to allow ISD 196 to construct a school in Rosemount School District 5th Edition, subject to the conditions as laid out in the, in the staff report, conditions one through seven.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Whitman, seconded by Commissioner Ellis. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We got one more.
Motion to recommend the City Council approve a CUP for a school to be located on the Rosemount School District 5th Edition, subject to all conditions approved as part of the city's site and building design review for the project.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Whitman, seconded by Commissioner Bugai. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That concludes our motions on this item this evening. This item will go forward to City Council on September 17. Thank you. That concludes our public hearing section for this evening. Is there any new business?
There is none, Madam Chair.
Any discussion items?
None.
No discussion items?
Not at this time.
Okay. I will do just a quick check of our next meetings. We've got our September meeting, September 24th, October 22nd, and November 26th are the next three meetings on our schedule. If anyone is unable to attend those meetings, please email city staff right away so that we can get that on the record.
Thank you.
So, Adam, they should email you, Anthony, anybody?
Anybody.
Anybody.
I'll certainly take them. We
Everybody, yeah.
Not Nick, they cannot air it. They don't, they don't want emails.
Now, our, the, the most important order of business-making is that we have a quorum so that we can conduct the business of the planning commission.
Yes, yes. Okay. And with that, I will adjourn tonight's meeting. Meeting adjourned.